Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the council are present this evening with the exception of Councilman Fairbanks. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is a public hearing, a Board of Equalization hearing for paving District 496. Purpose for the equalization special assessment is paving District 496. If there is anyone in the audience at this time that would like to speak relevant to the assessment, we will open that for comments at this point. Then we will close that public hearing no later than one hour after the opening of the meeting.
So just for everybody's information, District 496 is Prairie Avenue from Carlisle Street to Darwin Street. There are five property owners along that section. If you recall, oh, it's been a couple of years now, they came in, the property owners requested that we paved that stretch through there. They had a majority of the property owners in there. Total price was $35,170. Tonight, what we'll do is we'll set the assessment each property owner is responsible for over the next 10 years.
Questions, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? Mr. McLean?
I move that we continue with other agenda items until 8:01 PM.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, to continue the other agenda items until 8:01 PM. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Next is a public hearing, Board of Equalization Assessment for paving District 497, much the same. Is there anyone here that would like to have a comment or make a comment regarding paving District 497?
So District 497, come on up, is the alleyway between 10th and 11th, Garfield to Arthur. There are six property owners along this stretch of alleyway as well. There's about 200 feet of that alley, the last 100 feet on the north side was already paved. Again, the property owners here, we had requested it recently, and so they had more than 50% or 51% of the owners requested. That property was then, or was taken care of. Total price was $14,456, and they'll be assessed over seven years.
Nick, for the record, name and address, please.
My name is Nick Covey. Address is 1009 North 11th. Resident of Beatrice, Nebraska since 1989. Kind of a block representative for the project 497. So I'm just sitting here and part of my neighbors.
Okay.
So, and actually, just, gentlemen, and everyone in the audience, just a big thank you from our area on the job that was done. It was a job well done. Beavers of Lincoln did it for us. I appreciate all your support. It's a beautiful alley. There was a timeframe to get to that point on it. Tobias, thank you, a special thank you for walking me through all of it. We had 316 questions on the whole process itself, but we got through it on it, and it's a beautiful, beautiful job. And that's really what I was here for, is us thank you for the neighborhood.
Very good. Any questions from the council sent to Nick? All right, Nick, thank you very much. Nice to see you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. McLean?
I move that we continue with other agenda items until 8:01 PM.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsback, that we continue with other agenda items until 8:01 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved 7-0. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First item is Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on August 1st, 2022, as on file in the City Clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $655,580.98. Item F, approval of basor report of claims in the amount of $76,578.58. G, approval of ambulance write-off of bad debts. H, approval of special designated license for Beatrice American Legion bidding Norman Post 27 for an EVETS football tailgate event on August 15th, 2022, from 10:30 AM to 7:00 PM at the Veterans Club, American Legion VFW, 701 Dorsey Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item I, approval of final pay request for the AL Green subdivision, lot 6 through 8, sanitary sewer extension project, 2022, to Lammel Plumbing Incorporated, in the amount of $78,520.92, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, approval of change order number one to extend the completion date from January 30th, 2023, to July 1st, 2023, due to rebidding the water system improvements, electrical upgrades project as part of the 2021 SRF projects to Philip Karkowski Construction and Trenching Incorporated, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, award of bid for water transmission line project as part of the 2021 Water SRF project to Judd's Brothers Incorporated, in the amount of $2,356,200, as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item L, resolution number 6919, executing the, I'm sorry, the municipal annual certification of program compliance form for the Nebraska Board of Public Roads classifications and standards. Item M, resolution number 6920, executing the HDHP and OAP abortion compliance amendment and the HDHP and OAP amendment number seven to the City of Beatrice Board of Public Works' employee health plan. Item N, resolution number 6921, authorizing the chief of police of the Beatrice Police Department to execute an agreement with First Wireless Incorporated for the purchase of a dispatch council and radio equipment. Item O, resolution 6927, to apply for federal assistance for the recreational trails program for the purpose of extending Pioneer Trail from North 26th Street to South 24th Street. And P, resolution number 6928, to apply for federal assistance from the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program for the purpose of replacing the playground set located at Suratoma Astro Park with a new ADA compliant playground set. Is there any item that any member wants removed from the consent agenda? Mr. McLean?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. And that is approved 7-0. Next is a public hearing to consider amending Section 608(c)(5) and 608(c)(10) of Article 6 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Beatrice, Ordinance Number 94-13, regarding the removal of accessory buildings.
So, so what you have before you is a proposed ordinance that changes these two sections. The gist of it is that, as currently written now, when a primary structure comes down, the accessory structure can stay there if, one, there are no violations whatsoever to that accessory building, and then, two, if Rob Marrow signs off on that. The proposed change for you is that we take Rob out of the equation, and we just say that if the primary structure comes down, so too does the accessory building. We do this for a number of reasons, mostly just as a matter of trying to further the intent of our comprehensive plan and everything, and making sure that these properties are being used for what they were designated for, i.e., you've got a property that comes down because it needs to be condemned, and then there's an accessory structure there. It's been our experience that, for the most part, whenever there is a building coming down as a result of negligence or code violations, any accessory structures are also in pretty bad shape. Kind of, and even with the downtown areas, there's a big issue with, we have complaints all the time that a lot of our buildings aren't being used to their fullest extent, they're being used for storage, as well as in residential areas, you know, you've got places that either an act of God or demolition will bring a house down, and you're left with an auxiliary structure sitting there for years while it's not being developed. So, this proposed change, I believe, gives us a better enforcement mechanism to make these things happen. That is because currently, you have to go through, or, right now, only one person can sign off on that building staying up. And just for a visual cue here, each of these books, I think the font is around eight-point font, and if there's any single violation on that building, it's going to have to come down. And that's at Rob's discretion. What this does is take him out of the picture, realistically kind of brings it back into the Office of Administration, which are usually involved in these conversations anyway. And while it's not stated in the rule, what we have on the back end of that is the ability to contract with people to see what we can do about maybe getting a new structure on that property rather than let it go to waste as a storage unit. As well as that, in residential areas, they're not zoned for just general storage anyway. They're zoned to be used for residences, and this is a rule to kind of allow us to be able to put a stop to that going forward. The other part of that is being able to contract with the city is, a lot of people, I don't know if you guys believe this or not, but not every homeowner understands every single zoning rule that we have, and so when they're in violation of it, they usually don't even know it. What this allows us to do is not only say, yeah, the rule says you're in violation, it has to come down, but on the back end, hey, let's work with each other. We could still contract with you to try and get another structure on there within a certain timeframe. And what that does, it shows buy-in with the city. The city is not only kind of suspending that, that rule for a little while for you, expecting you to kind of come in and do what needs to be done to develop that for its intended use. The other part of that is, instead of just bringing the hammer down on them for a rule they didn't know they violated, they've got some buy-in on their own and some amount of personal accountability by entering into those contracts. And so then you might say, well, the city has no obligation to enter into these contracts with anybody, and they could just let the rule stand. Yes, that is a very real possibility, but without naming any names, we definitely know that there are certain people out there that with no amount of grace and arguably no amount of litigation, are they going to cooperate with the city and do what they want to do? In fact, they will do everything in their power to make sure that nothing gets done on that property and it goes to waste and brings down property values.
Point of clarification, Rob Marrow is head of the-
Oh, sorry, Community Development Director.
Director.
I apologize for that.
That's all right.
And so with this, too, just to kind of finish it up, even though Rob gets taken out of this picture, you're not losing the, necessarily, the ability to keep those garages if you're coming to the city and working with us, trying to get a contract, and you're still not replacing the Board of Adjustments here. If you don't like our interpretation or determination of a rule or anything like that, you still have the ability to go to the Board of Adjustments and have them study our interpretation and see whether or not they agree with that. At this point, I'll just kind of leave it open for questions.
So, my first question is, this got brought up, so, some years ago with Eric Teeman, I think, was maybe involved in this when this ordinance was enacted, where you could have to tear your garage, whatever's left of a property down. Who brought this up again?
So it's generally just kind of, it's not any one single thing. It's mostly just general complaints that, hey, this is a neighborhood, we got a bunch of houses in it, we would, we kind of bought this property expecting that next-door neighbors are going to also build houses and not just use it for storage. Particularly also with downtown areas, we hear it all the time, people are just using buildings down there for storage instead of, I mean, yeah, at least they're zoned for that there, but they're still not really developing or doing anything with those buildings. So with residential and commercial properties, it's just kind of been of an ongoing issue that's voiced regularly.
So you've had people complaining all along about this?
Yes, that's correct.
In residential neighborhoods, too?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And it just don't seem right to me that this can be lawful if somebody's got a perfectly good garage, but you're saying if you can find one thing in those two books, you can make them tear it down if it would be perfectly good, other than one little thing, right?
That is correct.
What if they correct that one little thing?
What's that?
What if they correct that one little thing?
Well, they should have-
Well, the thing is, you still have to have Rob sign off on that on the front end, and if it's already bad and not in compliance, under the rule today, it can still come down. Now, the sentiment that I've heard on the pushback of this is it seems like you're kind of punishing good property owners and all of that, and I get the sentiment. And, you know, I'm not from around here, I'm a young pup, I've only been here for two years, but I can tell you, in the dozens, if not hundreds, of cases that we do all the time with accessory buildings and other buildings not in compliance, 99% of the time, unless it's some act of God that wipes the house off the map, if there's a bad main structure, the auxiliary structure is also bad. So it's kind of trying to just match the rule to the realities that we face while still allowing you the practical option on the side to enter into contracts with those people and let them bring them up to compliance and get another structure on there. Because that's, that's the big deal here, is that just a big property, a parcel's going to waste as just a storage unit with a garage in a residential area rather than actually being developed into a new home, which is what it's supposed to be anyway in that-
But many times, if there's junk on, a junk house on each side, nobody wants to build a new house there. But is it up to us to decide what's going to waste? If it's, if there's a decent garage there, maybe one little thing that is wrong with it, why are we deciding that it's going, you just said it'd be going to waste?
Well, right now, it's not us deciding, it's Rob. At least what this does is kind of put it in the hands of, at the very least, Tobias and I, and Rob's always in those conversations anyway. It's not isolated to just one person. We always have those conversations. Again, the focus on this is to give us a mechanism to have a little bit more leverage with the contract and being able to have more accountability on that person outside of just a cold rule where they didn't even know they were in violation in the first place. At least this, on the back end, allows us to contract with that individual and try to get that cleaned up and actually get that property up to what it's supposed to be used for.
Do you know if anybody's ever tested this in court to see if you can actually do that?
Yeah, it comes out of your zoning rules, which you're going to be allowed to do under, under this law. I think the big thing here is what you're trying to do is have residential property, zone property, be used for residence. I mean, that's the whole purpose of residential zone property. We have property in town that allows for storage, and those are more commercial or industrial zoning. We have properties out there that are allowed to do those, that's where those types of uses should be at. The way the law's written today, it would allow you to buy a lot, build a garage, put a mobile home on it, build a garage, and tomorrow take the mobile home away. Under the rule today, that's what you're allowed to do. That's not what they intend to have happen on a residential lot. I think everybody would be upset that that happened next to their house, because it's not, again, not what you look for when you have a residential property. We're just trying to make sure that we close some of these loopholes up. We still want to work with property owners. If something happens, we're going to work to have a signed agreement. We do this quite often with other types of problems that come up. You sign an agreement with them, you give them an opportunity to correct whatever needs to be corrected. I mean, if, heaven forbid, somebody has a house fire and they lose a house, we're going to give you time to rebuild the house. And we're not, we're not going to come in heartlessly and try to destroy your garage at the same time, but we want to make sure we see progress and see something happening.
Mobile homes aren't allowed doing a residential?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, they are.
They are?
They are. And just to kind of give you a little bit of an idea, too, of just the general practice of the city when it comes to working with people on, you know, property ownership, we've got something that's going to be coming before you about a vacation for a part of a street. That didn't start out with him even knowing that that was an option. He wanted to have an extra structure on a property, didn't meet the setback requirements, and now we're working with him to get, get him to be able to do what he wants to with that property without it breaking any rules. It's, it's standard practice for the city to try to work with people and not just hammer them over the head with litigation or fines or anything like that. We have an eye toward development, not against it.
Sure.
Will the property owners out there that already have structures like this, will they be grandfathered in, or will you go back?
I think you'd have to grandfather them in. You can't change the zoning rule afterward to make them comply with it. Moving forward, they have something that comes into, if that garage happens to go away, you wouldn't allow them to build another garage back, they'd have to then come into compliance, but in the meantime, you'd allow them to be grandfathered in.
That's not in this ordinance right now, though, is it?
But the law also says you can't change the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And just to kind of look at it from a different perspective, this is kind of on the back end of a, like a demolition or a house going away. On the front end, our rules right now don't allow you to just go onto a residential property without a main structure and build an accessory structure. So this is really just kind of on the back end, matching up with that rule in the first place, because the whole intent of that is to not have people just using residential properties as general storage.
Is there a set period of time that they would have to tear down the accessory?
No. Right now, under this current proposed change, it just says it's supposed to come down. The, that part would be like part of the contract negotiations, what kind of structure they trying to build, how expensive is it going to be, what's their track record with the city, all that's going to kind of go into the, be factored and taken into consideration when you enter into those contracts, and that kind of frees us up to be able to actually play ball how we need to with the people where they're at, where they come to you. So you meet them where they're at.
Rich, did you have to come in?
Yeah, I've got some questions, and, and don't get me wrong, I, these junk buildings need to come down, but you stated you need Rob to sign off, but in the same breath, you said Rob is out of the equation.
Not, well, yes, in the same breath, but that's without context. So right now, under the rule, is that he's the one that signs off on it. The proposed change takes Rob out of the equation, at least as the one that has to sign off on whether or not that structure can change. So, yes, within the same breath, no to that being out of context.
Still confused, but go on. Years past, we've let people, now I don't know if this is in the, in the, but we've let people put up buildings, and if 20% of that building can be proved to be residential, does this affect that?
No. Effectually, what you're referring to is called the FEDI rule, that's still remain in effect. Those are guys chuckling out there, they know what the FEDI rule is, but that, that would still be illegal under this measure.
It will be legal?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, you're talking about this downtown storage. This has been an ongoing, I've been on the council for 20-plus years, this has been an ongoing problem. How do you, how are you going to enforce that? How are you going to tell them to move their stuff out of their building?
So that's for the main building, and you're right, the, the main building is not necessarily addressed by this, but the accessory structure's being left on there, which also aid to, or add up with that storage. If they're already using that main building for storing stuff, then the accessory structures certainly aren't helping there, and for those same people who likely had their building torn down because they neglected it and just let stuff be stored in there, the accessory structures are still there with just their full storage. So you're still, with this proposed rule where we're saying it comes down, one, you get the leverage of being able to contract with those people where they're at based on their track record, and then also you are trying to get ahead of them, like, using that structure and not, if they, if they already weren't taking care of that main building, it's not likely they're going to sit there and spend what it would be required to get another main structure up there or even bring their current accessory structure up to code. And so what this allows you to do is kind of be on the back end and negotiate with those people and say, hey, get something in here in X amount of time, or it's coming down, sorry about it.
So this is, this only applies to-
Accessory structures.
Accessory buildings, not the stores themselves?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's a different matter.
Okay.
Tendentially related, though.
Bob?
Just got two questions. Number one, how often does this happen? I mean, how often, what, what big, how big a problem does this exist today?
I can think of maybe a handful of times over the last 10 years where you've had an issue where both of them didn't come down. So it doesn't happen very often, but at times it will pop up, and we just want to make sure we kind of address them.
And again, if you're, if you're afraid of punishing those people who have a junk house that comes down but kept their garage in immaculate, in an immaculate state, they still have the ability to contract with us, so you're not necessarily not playing ball with them, and it's a matter of, like, do you think that nine times out of 10, it's people with immaculate garages that were, that are trying to keep them up, or nine times out of 10, is it junk house, junk garage?
And I understand, I'm just trying to get to the point of how, how often that is.
Yeah.
And then the second one, what is the impetus to take Rob out of the equation? You say, is it, is he-
Nothing that has to do, nothing that has to do with Rob. It's just a matter of you're putting the discretion in one guy's hand, he has to sign off on it, at least here, the rule is just cold, it takes everybody out of it, just says it has to come down, then you can negotiate with us.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Anyone from the audience? Yes, sir. Name and address, sir.
Larry Wolken, 1921 Irving.
Hi, Larry.
Tobias, you said, according to the rules now, we can build a garage and put a motor home, mobile home on it. As far as I got told, you never could put a garage on an empty lot, right?
You can't put a garage on an empty lot, you have to have a main structure first. The mobile home would be your main structure, therefore you could allow, allowed to have an accessory structure, which would be your garage, then you could remove the main structure. Under the current rule, you'd be allowed to keep the accessory structure.
You're never allowed motor, mobile, mobile homes on residential lots, either, right?
If you meet certain requirements, you're allowed to have them, yes.
Well, I'm not for this change, because I've got a couple of properties, and I take, keep them mowed up, and they look decent, there's not junk around them, and I just feel like if you got a, who's, common sense, nobody's going to build a new house on a 50-foot lot in older areas. I don't see any new houses going up in older areas. So you're forcing somebody to build a residential house within a year, right? Or within so much time?
Not if you have an empty lot, no, you're allowed to keep it empty forever.
If this accessory building's on there. You're saying the accessory building has to go down, or you got to build a residential house on it, right?
Well, that's just one consideration. That could, under that contract, could be a number of different things, yeah. But the ultimate intent is to try and get residential lots used for residential purposes, not storage. That's the ultimate goal. Not every, not necessarily every contract's got to read that way.
And if they got storage, most of it's, most of them are personal use. They've got an extra car, a classic car or something put in it. So it's not getting rented out as storage, it's for personal use, most of these. I don't know, very few that are actually renting them out, but I just feel like you're forcing somebody to build a house if they got a good garage on a undesirable area to put a new house up. Common sense is that you can't afford to do it, even if you had it for a rental property, you can't afford to do it because the return isn't good enough on it. That's why you're not seeing these new duplexes put up in, throughout town anymore, because our rent isn't high enough to, that you can afford to build a new residential property. So, that's my main thing. I, I think, because we had that changed about, what, 12 years ago when-
Somewhere near.
They did that? And I feel that things are fine the way they are. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Anyone else? Come on up. Name and address, please.
Rick Vaughn, Beatrice, Nebraska, 1520 Grant Street. I'm here tonight, as I was at the board meeting earlier tonight, to oppose this amendment to change the ordinance as it's been for the last few years, and to try to educate you all on the adverse effect that it will have on people that are trying to play by the rules. I understand there's people that try to slide it and try to bend the rules and not be cooperative, but that's not me. As far as adverse effect on this ordinance, as far as I go, I'm similar to Larry, we're both kind of in the same pot, that we both have properties where there once was a house and the garage was there. I have one on South Knight Street. I actually bought the secondary lot from the city for 550 bucks, but when I bought the property, the garage was substandard. I got a permit from the City of Beatrice, put new trusses up, new metal roof, bring the drug, garage, new electrical in the garage and stuff, and I use it for my, use of my business and stuff as far as houses and stuff. And I put occasionally, put trailers on, they have a license as far as the ordinance stands right now, so I use it for my personal use. So how will this adversely affect me and somewhat the city itself? Okay, that property, I purchased, like I said, the two lots for 550 dollars, the single lot and then the other one for 500. So right now, I'm paying roughly 11, paying taxes on 11,000 dollars on that property. So if this goes into compliance, and I'm in the same boat that Larry's in, it sets on two lots on South Knight, there's no way in God's green earth I'm going to put a new structure in there. There's no way. It's not feasible. We both do real estate, been doing it for years. There's feasibly, no way I can come in compliance if you pass, extend this on this ordinance and demand that I take that structure down. Financially, I'm going to be at loss on that deal because, number one, I can't sell that property, I'll have to remove that structure at the cost of rehabbing that structure, that's out the window. I can't sell it, nobody's going to buy that property, those two properties, and build 150, 200,000 dollar property on it to do, to do what you're doing. So the city gets less tax revenue, not only on mine, on properties like- So the city gets less tax revenue, not only on mine, on properties like Larry's. We are the exception, we keep them mowed, I mow the neighbors' yards down there, to keep it nice, you know, with my zero turn. So, and then if I, future, future problems on that property would be if I ever go to sell it, and this is in, this is in effect, it will drastically affect, I mean, I'll go from maybe being able to sell it to get my money back out, to essentially having a thousand dollar lot there that nobody's gonna want. So I'm gonna be losing thousands of dollars on that straight-up deal. And then, so I was, when I was at the meeting earlier, that was, it was all voted down, okay? So they seen things from my perspective, they voted it out, and, and-
Talking about the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Planning and zoning, yeah. It, it failed at the Planning and Zoning Commission to pass, so I think I got my point across there. I'll make it briefer here than what I did there. But the final thing I have, my, my concern on this, that stack of books right there, the man most qualified to go through that and make the decision whether something's substandard or blighted thing to the neighbors, they wanna take out of the equation. And I don't understand, why do you wanna take the one most qualified to make a decision to whether something's problematic and just go right over his head and, and take that upon yourself? Add a costly effect to the people, there's more than me that are affected. You know, there's some really nice, I mean, I think of a really nice house on North Twelfth that had a garage there for years. He was a city official, keeps it mowed, nice garage, paying taxes accordingly. Good thing for the city, they get it, got power on, I have power on mine, I'm paying utility bills. So we're bringing money in, we're keeping our property. So we, I understand there's exceptions to that, but we are not that exception, so I don't feel, and I actually asked the question earlier, why is this even rung to the forefront after all this time? Why are we having a meeting here to change something that's not been a problem, as far as I'm concerned? I've never had a problem with it. So with that being said, you know, unless you've got something to say to me, I'm more than happy to-
Is there any questions for Rick?
Well, if I may just address a couple of things. One, uh, the way this is written, okay? You would not have to put a house on your lot down on South Knight Street today.
And, and how would that be?
Because under today's rule, you're legal. If we changed the rule tomorrow, you'd be grandfathered in, which was asked earlier, she'd be allowed to keep the garage down there. You would not be required to build a house on it tomorrow. When you sell it, you would not be required to put a house on it then either, okay? Your future owners could continue to own it with just the garage down there. If for somehow your garage collapsed, fell down, burned down, whatever, at that point, you'd be asked to come, come into compliance with the rule at that time, which would require a house before an accessory structure is built.
Okay, now I don't see any, I haven't read your entire bill. You're telling me now that there's a grandfather clause in it, that on my situation and Larry's situation, we're grandfathered in and we don't have to do that. And if we wanna sell those properties, it, the new owner's gonna be grandfathered in also. Is this in writing, I mean, you have this in writing somewhere where I can read?
That's case law. State of Nebraska's made that decisions, many cases up ahead of us, many courts, many guys who wear black robes have made that decision before.
So, so Alaa, I wanna get it straight with you right here. Beyond the other meeting, basically voting you down, but you're gonna tell me right now on recording that I will be grandfathered, and this will not affect any prior, any building that I have now that would be affected by this?
Yes, that's Nebraska case law.
So that, that being said, okay, so-
Planning and zoning commission, by the way, Ricky.
What's that?
The Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body only.
Yeah, I understand that. I told, that's why I'm sitting right here, because it's like, you know, I'll talk to them, and I'll talk to you, and make my voice heard. So the, the final chapter and all that is, you know, it's just like, I still have not got an accident, why you're here today, discussing this matter, why it's pertinent before the city council to change this, other than to take someone out of the equation, more qualified to make those decision, and give it to someone else? So that being said, I have no further comment on that, on the deal, so.
Gary?
The Planning and Zoning did not approve this, right?
That is correct.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Anyone else?
I got one more follow-up question.
Yes, sir.
So, just so I know in my own mind, we're at the same point. I mean, if, if Rob determines that the building is substandard, then we're still kind of really at the same point that we are tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, while, Rob's still gonna be a part of this equation at the end, because he's gonna meet with you guys. I mean, you're not taking, you're just taking the signature out of his hand, not the, the thought process behind, or the inspection behind.
That's correct.
So effective when, if this was approved tonight, everything they've got is grandfathered. If they went and bought a new property tomorrow, or they have a current property that your house got demolished on tomorrow, then he would be impacted. But your current properties are good, so.
Yeah, put simply, it's really a change of who makes that decision, and on the back end, trying to get some extra leverage, uh, on behalf of the city.
Okay. Mr. McLean?
I move that the public hearing be closed at seven thirty-five PM.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Morgan, that the public hearing be closed at seven thirty-five PM. Your vote, please. That is approved, six to one, with-
I'm sorry, that should be seven, I'm sorry.
I beg your, okay, so you're okay?
Yeah.
So it passes seven-zero. Next is a public hearing to consider amending section one oh four of the subdivision ordinance of the City of Beatrice, ordinance number ninety-eight dash six, regarding the jurisdiction and applicability of the subdivision ordinance.
So what you have here, um, this is not approved by P and Z, last time, was approved this time. It was just a little bit of additional information they needed to understand that this substantively does not change anything. Uh, last week, in fact, they also, uh, did not recommend the, um, change of the definition of subdivision, but you guys passed that. You did not pass this one, even though they kinda go hand in hand, but specifically how this one is different is that in the first one, we were just generally stating in the definition of subdivision that, uh, it's kind of a term of art, and that it doesn't just mean you dividing land. It also includes the combination of parcels. This does a similar thing in the jurisdiction, jurisdiction and applicability part of our subdivision ordinance in that it just states generally, if you're dividing or combining lots, you may have to have a plat. Again, it's not changing the fact that we have administrative subdivisions, which do not require plats, and major subdivisions that do. There was a word salad, uh, that has stayed in there for a number of years, that's based on statute. Everybody in the planning and zoning meeting, after I had meetings with them afterward, I implored them to try and read that and tell me what, if anything, they gleaned from it, to which they all laughed after they read it, 'cause they couldn't tell what the heck was going on. So this language just kinda goes in and is attempting to put it in more plain English, to let you know, generally speaking, if you're subdividing things, which includes combination or division of parcels, you may have to plat it. Uh, and to just make sure everybody understands how this functions, nothing changes, and the only time that you, everybody knows the rules on the subdivision part where you're dividing them, this doesn't change any of the rules for combining them either. If you combine two parcels, that, uh, where the resulting lot ends up in ten or more acres, you need a plat. If you're combining two parcels, one of which is nondescript, the other has been platted, you have to plat. If they are both previously platted and are under ten acres, you do not have to plat. That's not changed substantively at all. And, and Planning and Zoning did approve this tonight.
Questions? Anyone from the audience? All right, Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at seven thirty-eight PM.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that the public hearing be closed at seven thirty-eight PM. Your vote, please, and that is approved, seven-zero.
Bob, you wanna turn yours on?
Oh. Next is a resolution, resolution sixty-nine twenty-two, executing the loan agreement, promissory note, personal guarantee, deed of trust, and any other necessary documents between the city and B Seven Investments LLC and Tracy Crawford for a direct loan in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars as part of the downtown revitalization program and CDBG grant twenty-one DTR zero zero four.
I move that resolution number sixty-nine twenty-two be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that resolution sixty-nine twenty-two be passed and adopted. Tobias?
Yet another one of our downtown revitalization grants, uh, coming forward. This one is for the property of one oh six North Fish Street. Uh, you see it's for B Seven or Tracy Crawford. Uh, he's looking at a roof replacement, uh, the loan is for nineteen thousand dollars. As with all the other ones, it's a five-year forgivable loan, uh, in the event that Tracy, for some reason, wouldn't keep the roof improvements. Seems awkward, but if he didn't keep them for some reason, the state may make us pay the money back to the state. This is a way for us to get our money back from Tracy, and if he did that, uh, so that's why they're all forgivable.
Questions from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven-zero. Resolution six, sixty-nine twenty-two has been passed and adopted. Next is item B, resolution number sixty-nine twenty-three, executing the loan agreement, promissory note, personal guarantee, deed of trust, and any other necessary documents between the city and the Heveland Building LLC, Jeffrey W. Davis and Rob M. Schaefer, for a direct loan in the amount of forty thousand dollars as part of the downtown revitalization program and CDBG grant twenty-one DTR zero zero four.
I move that resolution number sixty-nine twenty-three be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that resolution sixty-nine twenty-three be passed and adopted.
Again, part of the downtown revitalization grant, this is for one twelve and one fourteen North Sixth Streets. The old law firm that sits there, just south of Security First Bank, uh, it's called the Heveland Building. Uh, this grant will cover, uh, some stucco repairs, some soffit repairs, some tuck pointing, things like that on the exterior of the building. Uh, again, forty thousand dollars, five-year forgivable loan, just like all the others.
Rich?
Didn't we give a loan on that one time before?
Yes, they were part of the first downtown revitalization grant. However, they did not proceed with the program at that time, uh, so those funds were withdrawn and then given out to other recipients.
So this is the first time we're allocating any funds?
Okay.
Any other questions from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved, seven-zero. Resolution sixty-nine twenty-three is passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance amending six oh eight C five and six oh eight C ten of article six of the zoning ordinance, City of Beatrice, ordinance number ninety-four dash thirteen, regarding the removal of accessory buildings.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash thirteen, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash thirteen, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, six to one, with Councilman, uh, Barnard, uh, voting no. Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen by number the first time, ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen by number the second time, and ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen be passed and approved. Further discussion, gentlemen? Bob?
I'm just trying to wrap my hand around this a little bit. Okay, so, let's see if we did keep Rob in the equation. And he went out to a building and said it's substandard. At that point in time, it could be torn down. If it's, i- is there a case where he, that homeowner could come back and have a contract with the city, making that brought up to, to speed? And if that contract would be basically the, require the building of a new home?
So under the rule today, if you had a structure that was dilapidated?
Right.
Yes, we've, we've signed those contracts before. Dear property owner, you've gotta make X, Y, Z repairs, here's the timeline to make them. Uh, if you don't, you understand the city can tear your building down. We have signed those today.
I'm just trying to, just trying to wrap my, wrap my hand around, again, I think there was a good point of why do we wanna take Rob out of the equation, since he is our building code person? That's kinda what really bothers me on this particular, um, ordinance.
Okay. Anyone else, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. And that has failed. Uh, there was, Fraylin is in favor, as is Claybaugh, as is Billsbach. Uh, voting no is Morgan, McLean, Kerr, and Barnard. Motion failed. Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen was not approved. Next is ordinance amending section one oh four of the subdivision ordinance of the City of Beatrice, ordinance number ninety-eight dash six, regarding the jurisdiction and applicability of the subdivision ordinance.
I move that said ordinance give, be given number twenty-two dash twenty-two, the doc, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance number be given number twenty-two dash twenty-two, the nu- the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved, are you in favor of this, Gary?
Oh, sorry about that.
And that is approved, seven-zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-two by number the first time, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two by number the second time, and ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-two be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two be approved. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen?
Just a question?
Yes, sir.
What did the zoning committee do with this?
They approved.
They approved it?
Yeah.
Any other questions from the audience? Your vote, please. That is approved, seven-zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-two has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to close and vacate Chester Avenue, platted in the Belvedere Heights addition, in addition to the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash twenty-three, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance be given number twenty-two dash twenty-three, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved, seven-zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three by number the first time, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three by number the second time, and ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-three be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three be passed and approved. Tobias?
Chester Avenue is located out in the Belvedere area, it is just, uh, north of Lake Ladue. It is a street that was platted in the eight, late eighteen hundreds, it goes to one house. Mr. Lucroft used to live in this house, it's now been sold to, uh, the Messmans here. They are the only people who live on that entire street. They came in and asked about adding another accessory building, and that's when Rob noticed that in order to do that, would violate some setback requirements, and so we proposed to them vacating, uh, Chester Avenue here. And then ultimately, they're going to purchase that later in the evening, um, for a thousand dollars, and then they'll have ownership of it. If you do not do that, then the city is maintain and clean off Chester Avenue, remove snow, uh, put rock down, those types of things, to his driveway, which is in essence, his driveway.
You may have mentioned it, but we still maintain an easement.
We, yes, yes, you're correct. Yes, we do continue to maintain a utility easement across there, 'cause we do have some electric lines that obviously serve his house, so.
Questions from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven-zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-three has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance to convey real estate owned by the city to Trevor D. Messman and Abby L. Messman.
I move that said ordinance be given number twenty-two dash twenty-four, the tire, the title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance be given number twenty-two dash twenty-four, the title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Vote, please. That is approved, seven-zero. Ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-four by number the first time, ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four by number the second time, and ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-four be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four be passed and approved.
Just as we spoke last time, this is just the next step in signing the contract, if you will, um, to the Messmans for a thousand dollars.
Any questions, gentlemen? Audience, your vote, please. That is approved, seven-zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four has been passed and adopted. Next is a resolution sixty-nine twenty-four, executing a contract for sale of real estate and all necessary documents to Trevor D. Messman and Abby L. Messman.
I move that resolution number sixty-nine twenty-four be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Billsbach, that, uh, resolution sixty-nine twenty-four be passed and adopted. Any further questions needed from the audience? And your vote, please. And that is approved, seven-zero. Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-four has been passed and adopted. Next is a public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anyone here for the public forum? Okay, seeing none, we'll go into discussions and reports. First up is Engage Quarterly Report, and we've got a couple of, of folks with us. First up is Engage Quarterly Report, and we've got a couple of folks with us. This is Rachel Crackmeyer. She is the new executive director of Engage. She's just been on board for less than a month, right?
Yes.
Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you.
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 Baptism by fire right away, huh?
Yes. Okay. I like it. Okay. Thank you so much, Councilman Mayor, for the opportunity to present. This is going to be a short report for you all, as we're reporting on a quarter that I was not with Engage. So just a quick recap of things that have been happening throughout that quarter, most of the time was being spent in searching for the replacement for my position. So Aaron was the one kind of filling in, making sure that things kind of stayed afloat while that position was vacant. There, I've been actually going out and meeting with members of the community, businesses throughout the state as well, DED members, MPBD, those types of partners. One of the biggest projects that has been taken off in that quarter, and one of my biggest projects in the upcoming quarters, is the C-4K grant. Some of the upcoming things for that is there's going to be a gallery walk event that is for all licensed childcare providers and nonlicensed providers within the county to attend that. It's going to be hosted out at Southeast Community College, so they can come and attend a training event where they'll get two CEUs, things like that for attending. And that will actually be the kickoff for the grant application for childcare providers to increase capacity here in the county. So there's been some surveys that have been completed, which we're working on gathering all of the data for that, which I will share in the future once that's available. But there is a big need in the, in the community and in the county for increased capacity, so this grant is really going to help with that. We'll be also sending out information in the mail to providers, but again, those nonlicensed one or providers that are licensed will be able to find information on our website. Other than that, there's been an uptick in projects throughout the area, so I've got individuals reaching out to me, so that's encouraging, so we'll continue to work on those in the future. Other than that, a little bit about myself. Bob knows me very well. I come from Southeast Community College, so I've worked in workforce training, workforce development, higher education, all of those types of things. So I'm really excited to learn some new things, meet new people, and continue to help and grow this community as well as the county. My husband and I are both transplants to the area, and we have really grown to love Beatrice and Gage County. I can't imagine raising my family anywhere else, so thank you for the opportunity to present tonight.
Very good. Any questions of Rachel?
I do.
Okay.
On this Community for Kids grant, you say that you're wanting these, these daycare centers to increase their, their child capacity. Isn't there something that, they have so much space, they can have only so many kids. Do these grants take effect that they could add on space somehow, like, like take a garage and turn that into another portion? Would that offset the cost of that for these folks?
It can. It cannot be used for like new construction or anything like that, but it can be for like updates. So let's say like a provider had, had a home or a building that maybe they want to go from a level one to a level two, which increases capacity by four children, but maybe they need different windows. Maybe it's an egress window in the basement or something like that for them to increase capacity, the grant could be used for something like that.
And they would come to you guys?
Yes.
For that grant?
Yep. The application will actually launch at that event on September eighth.
Rachel, that's a seventy-five thousand dollar grant that can be spread out among different providers?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Or new providers.
Or new providers. For instance, if they needed to update a bathroom or something, those funds could be utilized for that.
Well, I had, I had one ask me here a while back about, they wanted to, they have an attached garage, they wanted to take the door out, put a wall up, electrical, everything they needed, and they wanted to know if the city would approve that. And I said, well, the best thing to do is go down and ask Rob, but now I can send them to you, correct?
Well, I'd still have to go to Rob.
Well, yeah, but I mean, to get the money to do, possibly.
Possibly, absolutely.
But a strategic element for workforce development, because those families are desperately seeking childcare, and this is a great opportunity for us.
Yeah, just, Rich, as part of the upstart of this, and my email in transition of employment opportunities, I got kind of kicked out of the meeting deal, but the group of people that's involved in this is some very excellent people with a lot of, a lot of background skills and knowledge in this, and if they can make it work, they'll make it work great for them. It's going to be a great deal for the community.
You said that's September eighth?
Yes, that's going to be the application launch.
At, where at was it?
The event will be hosted at Southeast Community College.
Any other questions of Rachel?
Rachel.
Sorry.
All right, no, go ahead, Rachel.
Rachel, you were out at the governor's summit in Kearney and met a lot of people that, it was just a really good day for you to meet a lot of people that you're going to be visiting with and putting face to their name now. So that was really good timing for Rachel to be out in Kearney last week.
Yes, it was.
Oh, yeah, we did work together. I think another plus that she probably didn't mention is she was a recruiter out there, and so she made a lot of contacts across the state, talking to not only children or prospective students, but also parents, so I think you guys have made a really good hire.
We think so.
Okay. Rachel, thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Welcome.
Okay. Next up is Tobias, City Administrator's Report.
So just a couple of highlights to point out to you. Last time it was asked how many disconnects we have in a month. If you look in your packet, you'll see that on August third, we had seventy-one disconnects, utility bills. We had eleven-hundred-and-four notices that were sent out for being delinquent, and out of those, only seventy-one had been disconnected. We also have Exhibit F in your packet, which lists all the SDL permits which have been approved, and you can see whether they're approved at city council or administratively. So again, you can do have it listed, you can track and see which ones are getting approved out there. I'd just like to note the number of roof permits. If you look in your packet, we show the number of roof permits, year-to-date last year was ninety-one, and this year are four-hundred-and-eighty-eight. So they are staying plenty busy with roof permits this year, moving those along. And then lastly, I just wanted to let everybody know that Thursday at five-thirty out at Hannibal Park, we're going to have the ribbon cutting for Quanis Field. So if everybody is available, stop out and stick around, watch a couple of games.
What time is that?
Five-thirty. Five-thirty, Thursday, Hannibal Park, we'll have the ribbon cutting for Quanis Field.
You'd applied for a grant in Tributary Forty-four. Does that, that they're looking at it, does that sound promising then, or?
So, the, so yes, the grant you asked about was a stormwater drainage study grant, if you will. We applied clear back in January. The state had to wait to get federal dollars available to them. Anytime a disaster's declared, some money goes to prevention or those type of grants that are out there. So that's when we now can have the opportunity to apply for that drainage study, and also for one in the Belvedere area. Those are two that we are applying for as we speak.
Could be some happy people.
Mr. Kerr?
Toby, I had a couple of people call me, these roofing companies are coming in here. Do they have to come to the city and prove that they have insurance and such as that?
No, we have no licensing requirements for any contractors, other than plumbers. So the only thing they do have to make sure they get is a peddler's permit. If they're going to go door-to-door and solicit, they have to get a peddler's permit. Outside of that, no, the only thing they need to do is get a roofing permit for each individual job they're doing.
Yep. Well, I was just asking, I said, I think the only thing we require is plumbing, so...
Is that individual structure or individual property?
Property.
Okay. I know a guy that's going to need two roofs here and along, just one mixture.
I know a city that's going to need some roofs.
Tobias, does the city inspectors go out to all these roofing jobs and look at every one of them?
They sure try to. If I said they got to every one of them, it may not quite be factually correct, but I knew they tried to get out to quite a few of them. We had one contractor coming in today and apply for seventy-five permits in one day. So I can't say they're staying on top of all of them. They've got a kind of a program worked out with those contractors. The contractors know what to take pictures of, so they can at least verify that certain things were done on those job sites, but they do try to work it.
They're all doing good quality work, then.
That's what they're hoping for, and I do have a system worked out on how to make sure they do inspect some of those, at least a little bit on each property, but I don't know how much they observe in each one.
Yeah, just curious.
Okay. Any other questions of Tobias? All right, next item, item C, discussion regarding the sale of fireworks. And Tim, you brought this up, and so...
Yeah, initially, initially brought this, have to have it put on the agenda, and I did ask Chris Colson from CNC Fireworks to, to come to the meeting tonight. There's been a request from local fireworks stands in town that we change our local ordinances to meet the state, which is, we sell currently from...
Our, our city code today allows from January, or excuse me, July first to July fourth. State statute allows June twenty-fourth through July fifth, and December twenty-eighth through January first.
And the reason they're asking is, right now, they're losing sales dollars to the local communities around us. They're going to Cortland, they're going to Wyomar, they're going to Fairberry, every place else that has a stand. They're still bringing them into the city and shooting them off fireworks, so why not allow our people who are not only doing it for a living for their family, but also many of our youth groups in town, baseball teams, softball teams, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, do it as a fundraiser, they, they work at these stands to, to make their money. So it was just asked to be brought before the city council to consider changing it to meet the state statutes.
Orders?
How long's it been? Have we always been four days?
I went back and looked, the only time we have touched this ordinance was in nineteen-ninety-nine. I believe we extended, allowed you to shoot fireworks on the New Year's Eve that day. Other than that, it has been these same four days forever.
So you're allowed to shoot, or sell for a longer period, but still only shoot for three days?
That's something you guys can make the decision on. I do think it might be difficult to allow somebody to buy it on June twenty-eighth, but not shoot it till July first. That might be difficult to do, but...
We all, we all know what happens. They, they go to these other communities, they bring them here, and they start shooting them on the first day, they bring them back, so it's not, I mean, we don't have enough law enforcement in this town to enforce them going around there for every little kid that's lighting a firecracker out of, out of the dates that we have set forth. It's a, you know, some people absolutely hate fireworks. Some people would say that only a licensed person should shoot fireworks off, but, you know, we were all kids at once, and we got, I mean, sorry for the fun haters, but, you know, people like to, little kids like to have fun.
What would you suggest him, as far as...
I, I, in talking with Chris and talking with some of the other local people who do the fundraising, they'd like to see it meet the state, state dates, and just mirror the state statute.
What is that, June twenty through the fourth?
June twenty-fourth through July fifth.
And I hear fireworks every week at my house, so...
Well, and another...
Not at my house, I hear them at my house, so...
There you go, thanks.
You want to clarify that?
So another consideration you'll want to have, too, not only kind of mirroring the dates for sale and for discharge, most other places match the time that fireworks can be for sale, like on those dates. Most of them mirror them, not all of them. Fremont, for example, allows the sales to just generally go through June twenty-seventh at twelve oh one AM, all the way through July fourth at eleven fifty-nine, while still going out, and at least through June twenty-seventh through July third, it's eight to eleven, and July fourth, eight to midnight. But you also see a lot of places doing, allowing for discharge from like eight to ten, was probably the earliest I saw, eleven kind of being the latest.
And if you also add into the fact that these people are spending their money in other communities, they're not spending their money here, we're losing city sales tax knowledge as well, so, not saying it's going to be an enormous windfall of profit for the city by any means, but it's definitely going to help the, the business owners and the fundraising kids.
Rich?
Chief, glad you're here. And I agree with Tim, I, you know, I hear them, but, and I, and I don't like fireworks, I'll be honest with you, I'm a hater. Do you have any problems with them bringing them in from the other communities? Does that, does that, does that cause problems for you guys when they bring them in? Because I, like, like Tim said, I hear them on the twenty-eighth, twenty-fourth.
Sure. Brian Akey, Fire Chief, City of Beatrice. This file folder's not as impressive as it looks. So we've been tracking the number of incidents that we've had with, that are fireworks-related, and I've got data back to two thousand and fifteen, and outside of two thousand and twenty, we have not had a lot of incidents, and basically, they've all been dumpster fires or the pile of firework debris that catches on fire at two o'clock in the morning. We had an incident where some teenage girl decided it'd be fun to throw some fireworks into a car. The car lost, but, you know, that, that was definitely a behavioral thing. You know, in two thousand and twenty, which was very different for obvious reasons, we had, we had four fires and then four injuries with it, but generally speaking, we've got very good stewards of people in this community with, with their behavior with fireworks.
Well, when we took the, the light and lanterns...
Yes, the lanterns are the only thing I've related.
Those, those caused problems. You haven't really had much problems.
No, no.
And those are illegal, right?
Yes, and those are still illegal after the state passed the law to bring in the Missouri fireworks, essentially.
I think there was three cities in Nebraska, and then the state went, and we were one of them, and the state went.
So Chief, I think your numbers here show that, other than two thousand and twenty, you've never had EMS call? Correct. Since fifteen. Since fifteen, and most time, it looks like it's two fire calls is probably the average. Yep.
Very minimal.
And it, and it's trash fires, essentially, so...
As much as I don't like them, I, I can't see a problem with it, if Chief doesn't have a problem with it.
I wouldn't have a problem trying it for like a week. I don't know, because what's the state, two weeks?
Ten days.
Ten days.
Ten days. I mean...
My only thought, Joe, was that they're still bringing them in anyway. I mean, you know, I, like I said, I heard them last night at my house, and July fourth was a long time ago.
No, that was Becky hitting the ceiling from you salesman, and then you send her home to me, thank you.
I was on vacation, Rich, it wasn't my fault. But, I mean, year-round, I hear at my, my house pretty regularly, at least once a week, so...
But they say the same thing with marijuana, but that's a good thing.
Well, I don't know what they do behind me.
As far as the times are concerned, not the dates, but the times, I'd like to see that consistent.
Yeah.
I don't want, I don't want to say, you know, the first two days from, you know, sunrise to eight o'clock, or, you know, just keep the time.
Chris might have some input on, on hours.
As far as shooting?
Yeah.
My thought was, I can understand during the week, cutting them off at ten, but like, you got like a weekend, Friday, Saturday, you know, allow it to be a little longer. I think that would be, be fair. That's when more people are having their gatherings or having their parties, and they may want to shoot them a little bit later, especially since it gets darker a little bit later in the night.
Dark, yeah.
Sergeant Huster, I'm going to put you on the spot. Since we don't have a time limit today, isn't it just disturbing the peace?
Um, I'm professional speaking, it's kind of a nightmare when we start talking about times, and we like to versus, you know, like, a one five hours hour or not, so, I think we're, throughout the response, as long as we can establish a general rule, whatever our, our dates are going to be, whether we can allow them to shoot them off, we have a general timeline, no matter what, that everyone's aware of, whether that, if I have a five hours time, or if it's midnight every night, something that's black and white that our dates are going to be, there can be allowed and shooting off, we have a general timeline, no matter what, everyone's aware of, whether that applies to five hours time, or if it's midnight every night, something that's black and white that we can just all agree on. It's more beneficial than, sometimes it's ten o'clock, sometimes it's midnight.
I agree with Chris on the, you know, during the weekday, ten o'clock, but maybe a little extra time on the weekend. But, you know, Sunday would obviously be considered a weekday with people working the next morning, so...
Bob? So did I hear right that also allows fireworks to be sold in a city from December twenty-eighth through the thirty-first?
Correct.
So do we really want to open that box up? Do we want, if we mirror what the state says, then we would be selling, we'd be able to sell fireworks the twenty eighth through the thirty-first in town? Is that correct?
I'm not asking for it.
I'm just saying, when you say mirror, I'm thinking maybe we should leave December twenty-eighth through the thirty-first out, but...
Any input on that, Chris?
My thought is, I'm usually hearing them anyway. People are going to other towns and nearby, they're selling, so, and you're still bringing them back, so...
If you're, Chris with CNC does most all of your large fireworks shows around this community anyway, so he's probably the foremost expert that we have in the area, so that's why I invited him to come.
I mean, I'm just throwing it out there. Don't know if it causes heartburn or not.
You know, even if we tried it for one year and it turned into disaster on the, those three days, the twenty eighth through the thirty-first, we could always amend it and take it back out.
Let me ask you, Chris, is it economically feasible for a fireworks stand to open up just for a couple of days, December twenty-eighth through January first?
Bob, to be honest, I've never had the opportunities. I think, you know...
Sure, but I would, I would think that getting a tent and everything else would be pretty expensive.
I think in most cases, they have to be, you know, a retail outlet that would have something like that.
From another state?
Well, or if somebody opened up a retail space.
Understand.
You know, that would, that would be, but you're not going to be able to afford that tent, which is probably a couple grand, I'm guessing. I mean, you're not going to, I mean, who's really going to stand outside in thirty-degree weather? I'm not. Richie and I, but I'm not.
I don't like fireworks. They're noisy and they stink.
Okay, well, let's bring up...
One more thing.
Oh, yes, sure, Joe.
I'm not a pedoer myself, but that is the biggest complaint I hear from a lot of people, is their dogs go crazy with fireworks. They have a hard time at night with all the fireworks going off. So I think we will get a lot of pushback from a lot of residents if we have it too long. I mean, look at Lincoln and Omaha. They don't have that big of a window because they do have so much population. I mean, we can, I don't know. I would be in favor of doing a couple extra days to try it, but I don't know if we want to.
Yeah, that's why we brought it up for discussion. I mean...
I kind of agree with Joe a little bit. I asked around people, and ten days seem like too much for a lot of people. I don't know what the exact day is, but that seems long.
Just as a quick, if you do extend it to ten days, it'll also be over homestead days, weekend, whether you want that or not, but that'll stretch into homestead days, just as a FYI.
That means all of our visitors could buy more fireworks and make more sales tax.
Pay for the fire department. All right, we'll discuss this further and try to bring something forward.
Thanks, Chief.
As a proposal. All right, thanks for everybody's input. All right, anything else on that subject before we move on? So by state statute, we had to have our Board of Equalization hearing open for at least an hour. We have accomplished that, so we will then continue with Board of Equalization hearing for paving District 496. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or concerns about paving District 496? Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at eight thirteen p.m.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Frayland, that the public hearing be closed at eight thirteen p.m. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Mr. McLean?
I move that affidavit of mailing notices on assessments in paving District Number 496 be received and placed on file.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Bilzbuck, that the affidavit of mailing notices on assessments in paving District 496 be received and placed on file. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Next is Resolution 6925, Equalizing Assessments in Paving District 496.
I move that Resolution Number 6925 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution 6925 be passed and adopted. Any discussion? And your vote, please. And that is approved seven zero. Resolution 6925 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance levying special assessments in paving District 496.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 22-25. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Bilzbuck, that the ordinance be given Number 22-25. The title thereof approved, the rules suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved at seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-25 by number the first time, ordinance Number 22-25 by number the second time, and ordinance 22-25 by number the third and the final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-25 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Bilzbuck, that ordinance 22-25 be passed and approved. Any further discussion needed, gentlemen? Anyone from the audience? Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance 22-25 has been passed and adopted. Next is a Board of Equalization hearing for paving District 497. Is there anyone that wants to speak relative to paving District 497? Mr. McLean?
I move the public hearing be closed at eight fifteen p.m.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at eight fifteen. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero.
I move that the affidavit of mailing notices on assessments in paving District Number 497 be received and placed on file.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the affidavit of mailing notices on assessments in paving District 497 be received and placed on file. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Resolution Number 6926, Equalizing Assessments in Paving District 497.
I move that Resolution Number 6926 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that Resolution 6926 be passed and adopted. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Resolution 6926 has been passed and adopted. Next is an ordinance levying special assessments in paving District 497.
I move that said ordinance be given Number 22-26. The title thereof be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that the ordinance be given 22-26. The title thereof approved, the rules be suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-26 by number the first time, ordinance 22-26 by number the second time, and ordinance 22-26 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance Number 22-26 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Kerr, that ordinance 22-26 be passed and approved. Any further discussion? Your vote, please. That is approved seven zero. Ordinance Number 22-26 has been approved. With that, our next regular scheduled meeting is going to be on Tuesday. Notice the date change. It's Tuesday, September sixth, and we will have a special meeting on August twenty-ninth. That's the last Monday of this month regarding conducting the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget hearing. And with that, Mr. McLean, I would vote that we go into executive session.
I move the City of Beatrice go into closed session at eight eighteen p.m. for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate and potential litigation.
Second.
Moved by McLean, seconded by Bilzbuck, that the City Council go into closed session at eight eighteen p.m. for the purpose of public interest to discuss real estate and potential litigation. Your vote, please. And that is approved seven zero. Thank you everyone for coming.